Welcome. Today is December 7th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. And as always, the meeting will be video recorded. We'll take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. But I thought we also ought to acknowledge. Gus, are you ready? Good. All right. We ought to acknowledge that today is the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor, December 7th, 1941. So if we could also observe a moment of silence for the people killed that day and gratitude for the many millions who responded to the call to serve their country thereafter. Thank you. All right. At 7:00 PM, pursuant to notice, we will have our tax classification hearing with the Board of Assessors. I see the Board of Assessors are here. Welcome. And I'll ask the clerk to read the notice of the hearing.
The Medfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Channery Meeting Room, 2nd Floor Townhouse, 459 Main Street, for tax classification purposes. The central issue to be discussed during this tax classification hearing is whether all five classes of property—residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal —shall be taxed at the same rate or at different rates for fiscal year 2022. MGL Chapter 40, best general law, Chapter 40, Section 56. The Board of Assessors will provide relevant information regarding the tax rate, including the fiscal effects of available alternatives. Interested taxpayers are urged to attend the meeting—the hearing. Written and oral statements from interested taxpayers will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen's Office and taken into consideration at the hearing. Michael Markucci, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
And did we receive any written comments? All right. So, Yvonne, welcome.
Thank you.
Our principal assessor, Yvonne Ramalot.
Okay. Nick has a little presentation. I'll just go off of this. Okay. Go ahead. You can—okay. So, as the— As the notice said, every year by statute, the Board of Selectmen have to decide if they want to split the tax rate or not. The Board of Assessors provides information to help you make that decision. So, the tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's total taxable valuation. And when you do this, this is known as the uniform tax rate, where each class of property pays the share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. So, as you can see in this pie chart, the residential class makes up the majority of the value in the community. When you adopt a residential factor tonight, if you choose a 1, then you would be staying with the uniform tax rate. If you were going to decide to split the rate, you would choose a factor less than 1. So, the example I've given on the board here is the maximum shift that the town can choose is 50%. So, the residential factor, then, that you would vote would be .97073. The residential tax rate would be 1691, and the commercial tax rate would be 2613. Now, this is based on our proposed tax rate of 1742. So, the uniform tax rate would be 1742. But this is how it would split if you were to opt to a 50% maximum split. However, you can see from this pie chart—it looks very similar to the last pie chart—the residential base is still paying the majority of the levy. So, I usually present this every year. This is the surrounding towns' last-year tax rates. As you can see, four of the communities have very similar residential percentages to Medfield, and they do not split the rate. Walpole and Westwood have a much higher commercial base, and so they choose to split the rate. Typically, communities don't split their rate until they have at least 10% commercial, industrial, and personal. So, historically, we have always maintained a single tax rate. If you shift the rate, it would put a burden on the commercial, industrial, and personal So, this is the overall scenario. Basically, that pie chart in numbers. This year's share is—for the commercial, industrial, and personal properties—they are projected to pay $2.8 million, and last year it was about the same. With the 10% shift, $2550, you can see how that would go up. So, the individual scenario is where you can really see the differences. I've listed two properties. They're the same value, which is our single-family average for this year, $72800. So, with the single tax rate, both properties are going to pay $12,556. When you go down to that 50% shift, the residents would only save $367, and the commercial property would be paying over $6,000 more. So, you can see how that would impact your commercial properties. This is just some historical data. Again, you can see that their percentage of the levy hasn't changed in the last five years. It runs about 5%. Single-family average—so, this year—for fiscal year '22, your single-family average is $72800, and that will correlate to a tax of $12,556 with our proposed tax rate So, again, if you adopt the residential factor of 1, it'll result in a uniform tax rate. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Pete.
No questions, just a comment. Again, it doesn't seem to make any sense to have a split tax rate, so the savings for the residential is so small compared to the penalty for the commercial that even though we keep saying we want more commercial taxes, it doesn't make any sense to do it.
Don't have any questions. Agree with Pete. You know, it's amazing. Every year, you come up with one more question about something you don't know. So, I do have a question. What is—what is personal property?
Personal property?
In the fifth category? Yeah. What's an example of it?
The majority of the personal property are the utility companies.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
If you're in Newton, it's your office.
Well, that too. Right. We do have a $10,000 threshold, so if you have a very small office, you are most likely not going to receive a personal property tax bill for us.
Newton sends me a tax bill for like $6 a quarter.
Yeah. We don't do that in Medfield. That's painful for everybody.
All right. No questions for me. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the assessors?
I would just point out—
Just want to get a microphone there, Ken? No, just get a microphone so the people at home can hear you. We can hear you just fine, but the people at home won't be able to.
You can go right up there, yeah. So, I'm Kenneth Manning, Board of Assessors. So, I wanted to kind of provide a comment, really, to the public in general, this perception that, well, we should tax our businesses more than residential taxpayers. And the data presented here show why that's really not viable in a town like this. If we want to change the nature of this town and become a place that has, you know, lots of shopping malls and retail and industrial stuff, that would be possible. But, of course, that would change the nature of this community. It ultimately isn't viable to tax our businesses out of town and tax them at a higher rate. And also consider, too, that the—many of the business owners are, of course, residents as well. So, this is a situation where math really trumps sometimes the perception among the public, and it makes sense, I think, to have one rate. Thanks.
I think even without the split rate, the additional commercial businesses do provide some modest cushion, given our small amount to residential property taxes. And if you look at the towns that are—even without a split tax rate—that are close to us, that have somewhat lower taxes, it's almost dollar-for-dollar correlated to the commercial property they have. If you look at Hobbiton—I think Hobbiton is about 16% commercial. I think there is—they might be a single rate. Can't remember. But if you look at the difference in taxes between Hobbiton and Medfield, it's almost exact the difference in commercial property. So, it does have a great benefit to taxpayers, and I agree that we want to hang on to our commercial businesses, and raising their taxes is not the way to get them to stay. So, if you don't exactly have a highway or a train station or anything else to offer them— All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Um, I need a vote, and—
Other than the vote.
And on the LA5 that Nick has that I asked you to sign—you don't have to sign it online anymore, but—
Oh.
It does give you the excess levy capacity, which is $28,000 and change.
Okay.
So, you are informed of that number.
Okay. So, we don't have to sign it electronically?
Nope, just manually.
It was always one of the enjoyable parts of this hearing afterwards, trying to remember our passwords. Trying to see if you could reset the password at like 11 o'clock at night before you could do it. That was always—it's kind of—
I'm gonna miss it.
It's kind of Medfield tradition.
Christine and I made a complaint, and the state took it off.
Oh, wow. Very good. All right. Well, I will then declare that the hearing is closed and ask the clerk to make a motion with respect to the tax rate.
I just—there's a side comment. Recognizing we have a $28,000 excess levy cushion, I expect the budgeting cycle this year will go smooth as silk. That's—that's great to know. I move that we approve a residential factor of 1 for the FY '22 tax rate.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much to the assessors. And I agree, you met the standard in the hearing notice that you did, in fact, provide relevant information, so thank you. All right. Our next appointment, Town Clerk Marion Binaldi, to discuss representing and redistricting. I've been practicing to say that all day, so I think I got it. Yeah. The re and the re, so.
So, I was here on October 5th and presented the representing changes that I made using the 2020 census maps, which the changes essentially affected about 148 residents in the Crest Circle in the Janes Avenue area of Medfield. We got everything in. October 12th, everything was accepted. You can sit. Everything was accepted, and everything was great. Unfortunately, the week of November 1st, Governor Baker signed off on the new district boundaries for all the 200 seats of the House and Senate, and the redistricting lines were created using the 2010 presenting maps instead of the 2020 maps, which is what all the town clerks used. So, the days prior to the governor signing it, the—his chief counsel reached out to the Massachusetts Town Clerk Association and the Secretary of State, and they tried to figure out the best ways to mitigate the impact of the map discrepancy, but there wasn't enough time at that point to make enough changes to the bill. So, anyway, so Medfield is a split municipality, and the changes that were previously approved by the Board of Selectmen on October 5th unfortunately now will create subprecincts. So, due to the—us—the town clerk using the 2020 maps and the governor signing a bill using the 2010 map line, so the subprecincts would—it would essentially mean that you could be in Precinct 2, and that's where you would vote for the local elections, but then for the state elections, you would have to vote in Precinct 4. So, it gets a little confusing to voters and—from the town clerk's standpoint, when you're talking about primaries and making sure everybody gets their right ballots, and it gets a little bit confusing. So, anyway, so the good news is—is that after talking with the Secretary of State's office and the Census Board there that have been doing all of this work with the town clerk since April, I do have until the 15th to essentially get you to vote it back. So, it's essentially taking the 2010 precinct lines and dropping in the 2020 precinct—the census numbers—to align the precincts with the districts, if that makes any sense at all.
So, it's like de-re-presenting?
It's like—yeah.
Yeah.
It's—I'm going backwards. So, you know, the good news is—is that I still have time to fix it.
Okay.
The good news is—is that I've learned the process inside out, having done it four times now. So, hopefully, in 10 years, I'll—
Right on.
—crank right through it. So, I'm sorry for the—
Well, in 10 years, when they use the 2020 map you just adopted—
Well, yes.
You'll set to go as well.
I should be good to go. So, anyway, so I just want to hopefully get that voted back, and then I can get it out the door. It'll go back before the LEDRC to get them to approve it, and then we can move forward.
All right. Any questions? Pete?
No, just a comment that it seems unfortunate that the state did this to us and to all the other cities and towns, apparently.
Yes. The good news is—is that Medfield—we're very fortunate because I have time to fix it, and it was only about 148 voters. There are some towns in the Commonwealth who have a big mess that they're not going to be able to dig out of. So, I'm just trying to dig out, because we have the opportunity to do it.
Gus?
I would just make the comment, I hope we do not allow these gerrymandering techniques to just grow rampantly here in Medfield. Only—this is, again, just my quirky curiosity. So, in the map that you provided with us, are we voting to go to where the red lines are, or were the red lines what we voted to before that we're going back to the yellow lines?
We're going back to the red line. So, you'll see in the crest—
We're going back to the red.
Right. The crest circle kind of peaks up a little bit, and that's what I was looking to get rid of, because I don't like peaks. I like straight lines. But we're—apparently, the redistricting committee liked that peak, so we're going to let them have it for 10 years.
Because I was starting to see a salamander there with those two eyes, but it's okay.
After you look at it long enough, you will.
Okay. All right.
You want a form of motion you want them to pass?
I did give them a form that they have to sign, but a motion would probably be great.
And you gave the number, 148 is the only—it's 148 people this affects, essentially.
I'm sorry?
This affects 148 people—
Correct.
—who got moved, and now they're getting moved back, essentially.
Correct.
All right.
And they have no idea they've been moved.
And they have no idea that I moved them and I'm moving them back.
Right. I hope people enjoyed their brief—brief run in Precinct 2 and they're back to Precinct 4, whichever else it is, so they can say they once lived in Precinct 4. Okay. Any comments, questions from the public? Anybody? All right. Gus, motion?
I move that we—I'm trying to make sure I know what the right thing is to say that we're doing—that we—is it—should I move that we're reversed—that we reverse the representing?
Approving the precinct map that has been proposed.
You're just approving the new one.
Are we approving the revi—okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we simply rescinded the prior vote and reinstituted the prior—
Why don't we just adopt this? And this says, "We are certifying that we voted to accept as presented by the town clerk the 2020 representing plan for the town of Medfield." So, I think we should move that we have accepted, as presented by the town clerk, the 2020 representing plan. Does that work for you, Mark?
As of today's date.
As of today's date?
Yes.
Presented—well, it even says on there, "At a meeting held on December 7th." Hold on, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay.
And maybe just say, "Rescinding your prior action."
All right. Why don't we move—two motions here. We'll make Mark happy. You can move to rescind our prior approval of the precinct—re-presenting.
Okay.
And then we can prove through that. How about that?
I move that we rescind our prior approval of the representing as originally recommended by our town clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No? All right. Next motion.
And then I move that we accept the proposed representing as—I just have to get to the right sheet of paper here. Give me a second. Approve the representing as recommended by the town clerk in the letter dated December 7th, 2021, referenced town of Medfield, 2020 representing.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Well, this letter is actually from us, but it's—
As the town clerk—
As per me.
We're good. All right. I think we did it. Mark, did we do it?
I think it sounded great, but—so, that will get signed this evening, correct?
This—we'll sign—it'll sign it right now if you want.
That would be lovely.
Signed right now? Can we sign this right here, or do you have an official one for us to do?
Where this creates havoc is municipalities that basically don't vote at large. They vote by precinct—vote by representatives, by precinct.
Right.
Marion, what are all those blocks in the spreadsheets?
I'm sorry?
There are these lists of blocks of about—
Blocks and blocks, right.
Blocks, yeah. What are those about?
So, in the—I should probably go back over here, right? In the representing process, it's not something that is just based on numbers. It's also based on ethnic diversity and things. When you fill out the census and you're answering all of those questions, they take all of that information into account when they're laying out the precincts, so that you essentially don't have the same ethnic groups voting within the same precinct. Does that make sense?
No, but that's fine.
Okay. So, it's—it's—in this town, it's—it's mainly based on numbers in Medfield, but in certain towns where there's cultural and ethnicity, and there's a lot more diverse, they have to kind of move them all around. So, that's what those lots and blocks are for.
Yep. Thank you.
So, what I took from all that was the very last page that only has a single line that says, "Grand total gives us our up-to-date population and demographic breakout—as of the date that you did this."
Yes. If you don't want to read the eight pages before that, that's basically—yeah.
That's right.
That's—the good stuff. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next discussion item, further discussion of potential next steps for the new elementary school. I don't have anything for this, but I think, Gus, you had it asked, and I know the school committee had had this on their agenda for last week—
Yep.
—but were obviously not able to meet because of unfortunate circumstances. So, this is your request, so—
Yeah. So, a couple things. Let me go back to our last meeting. Everything I'm saying here is strictly in the interest of brainstorming. None of it is staking out positions. Nobody—none of it's making recommendations. All I've been trying to do is to get my head wrapped around where we're at right now with the idea that we want to move ahead quickly. So, at our last meeting, we had two agenda—or actually, had three agenda items related to withdrawing from the rejected MSBA project. The second step I tried to make was that we would be looking at a project at Dale Street, and you balked at that, which at first, when you did that in the meeting, I'd go, "Oh, no, let's not dredge up a Dale Street-Weelock site battle." But then, before the meeting was over, I started to think, well, actually, maybe what you were really saying—so, this is partly me asking to clarify your position—what you were really saying is, "Let's not automatically lock ourselves into a single school project, but let's consider alternatives that might potentially involve work on the Dale Street site and work on the Weelock site." Regardless of whether that was what you meant when you sort of balked a little bit, my head then continued on down that path. And where I got to, one of the things that actually had always been a question for me is if we were originally building a new Weelock school so that 20 years from now, when the current Weelock school is going to be redone, we could look at integration. I always kind of said, "Why are we waiting 20 years? If that's where we want to go is to get to an integrated school, why are we waiting 20 years to actually begin to do it?" So, I was predisposed to that. After our conversation last week, I went farther down that path and said, "What if we were thinking about basically some type of renovation or some sort of rework at the Dale Street site and some sort of expansion or improvement renovation at the Weelock site?" With the idea that you would have—we would be moving toward two—a two-school configuration between those two sites now. And where that then took me was, in other words, sort of like a 3-3-3-4 grade configuration in town, where the first two 3s would be an upper elementary and a lower elementary. This is strictly brainstorming. I am not recommending anything. As far as I'm concerned, the school committee is the committee that should come back to the town with their concept for a school. So, nothing I'm saying here is intended to push for a particular answer. But in terms of my thinking about just trying to get a picture of what this might look like, that's where my head went. And so, let me keep going. I'll get all my thoughts.
Yeah, no, please do.
And if there's anything to—anything that's worth responding to, you can do that. So, that—that's kind of just trying to get my arms around what that would look like. It's the school—in my view, it's the school committee's call, but for me to try to envision how we get somewhere relatively quickly, whether you intended it or not, your—your response to my second—second question two weeks ago got me thinking going down this path. From there, the other piece that I went to is, we had talked about having a public hearing as maybe a first step in this whole process. I had a conversation last week with Jessica Riley and—and raised that as it seemed to be a logical first step, just to simply, in a way, just get—in an unstructured way, feedback from people. Jessica was receptive to that, but the school committee—I think—from her response, I think the school committee has to decide whether they want to jointly sponsor a public hearing or whether they want to have their own public hearing, and—and they haven't met, so I don't know where they're coming out on that. Regardless of that, I think we should continue to look at having a public hearing, probably —most likely in January, obviously, because it's not a good time to do that now, but I would suggest we should continue moving ahead with our thoughts about holding a public hearing in January. That's another thread. And then the other—the other thought in—in my head has been, "Well, we have a bylaw which is under revision. If we revise that bylaw around the configuration of a school building committee, that bylaw will have to be approved at the—at the annual town meeting, which won't be till May." So, as a practical matter, we wouldn't form a building committee until after that bylaw either was or wasn't approved. And between now and May, it doesn't make sense to tread water. So, that started me down another path that said, "Forget the building committee. Could we put together a committee—call it a vision committee, call it a—a concept committee, whatever. I don't know what the right name is for it, but a group of people whose charge between now and the town meeting would be to put together a concept for—the—for this project— what do you say, the school? The project that would define—probably based on school committee input for where the—they want to take the schools—would define what this project should be to best meet the needs of the schools in light of the rejected proposal, probably specifying a concept for what that project might look like in terms of geographic configuration, purpose, scope, cost, and, you know, maybe driving considerations or something like that. If I go one step further, their output then would become a non-binding article at the town meeting to get an initial response from the attendees at the town meeting on whether they think that concept is headed in the right direction. And all of that is, A, trying to get everybody looking forward, B, doing some things to seed some preliminary indications that the town is headed in a good direction. And if, in fact, it is endorsed, that suddenly gives the building committee some clear direction on where to take things to—if—to turn this into a real project. All of this brainstorming, none of it's positions, none of it's recommendations.
Yeah. All right. Pete?
So, I think that getting more information from residents is always good. I'm not quite sure what you're looking to accomplish with your public hearing, but I'd be curious to hear. In terms of—of some sort of vision or something, so that's a committee, I guess, to—looking to create a vision for the town meeting. That sounds fine to me. I—I don't know exactly how that would work.
We'd have to be thoughtful about who we put on that committee.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah. And—and I guess the question is, how much planning can you do before you really engage in the serious planning? Because, I mean, that's what happened in the last project, was that there was a lot of very serious, intensive planning around the different issues that you needed to make decisions about to build a school, including the site. And then, when that got decided, people in town felt like they hadn't been heard and been left behind, so that—maybe you're trying to work around that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just as a—as a practical level, yeah. I appreciate—so, my practical reaction to that is, there's not enough time to do that in a serious way before the May town meeting, and so—
I think we have to do that.
I—I think to—to—to map out a vision, then, what does that mean? Again, and I—I—I want to hear from the school committee before we get into a deeper discussion about this, because you're already starting to sound like this is a position you're staking out as opposed to a brainstorm that you're having. I'm getting the Gus Murby has a position vibes from your response, and so I would like—
I'm only reacting to the position he goes to.
I'm just saying, if the idea is that you're going to be able to, in essentially I'm just saying, if the idea is that you're going to be able to, in essentially four months, put together, you know, without, you know, put together a vision for the school in four months that you're then going to vote on at, at town meeting, that strikes me as potentially not enough time. And so, it seems to me if, if, if we're going to look at the, the next process and the next bylaw, I mean, it, it should be the, the remit of the, you know, reconstituted school building committee to help develop that vision. And I, I don't, I'm not averse to some sort of interim committee to help frame that or help get feedback or whatever they want to do. And again, I want to hear from the school committee before staking on any position on that, because they've got to make some judgments from their standpoint about how they want to proceed and the timing of how they want to proceed. Because I wouldn't want to push ahead with a, a vision committee if they didn't want to do that. So, I think we do need to hear from them. I, I'm just thinking practically, you know, if, you know, the warrant goes to press in the end of March, effectively.
March.
And so, you're talking about forming a committee that's then going to develop a vision for the school between the middle of January and the end of March strikes me as not necessarily enough time. And again, I, I want to, I want to, it's not a position either, it's just sort of just practically knowing how much time we have. And I, I think if we focused a little bit on the process, I think getting more information is good between now and then, and kind of tried to get consensus on what the process will be going forward. I think, because realistically, you're not going to fund anything this year anyway. And so, if we could get consensus on the process, then, I mean, hopefully, wouldn't, you know, the, the next year would then be, if the school committee's judgment is that they want to go ahead with the new school right now, they may not. So, it's up to them, and I don't, I don't want to have too much more of a discussion of this without their guidance.
What would we do between now and May?
Well, we, well, we would hopefully frame a bylaw for a new school building committee and get people's input on that and get comment on that. That would then be proposed to the town meeting if, and again, this is, this is a, the school committee is the moving party on this. If there were, you wanted to have some sort of study committee or investigatory committee that had some charter that would give us more information to hand off to the school building committee, that may be useful. I just don't think you're going to be able to develop a vision for the school in three months. That, that's then going to be voted on in a non-binding way that, that will then be handed off to the building committee to do something else. I just think it, and again, I'm, I'm, this is not a position either, it's just a, it's practically understanding how much time there is to do things. I'm not sure that there's time to do that, and I think we have to, to figure out what the process is going to be long-term before we start getting into the substance of what we're doing or before we're going to give a committee a, a particular, in my, if I can, it was a long time ago, so I don't remember what I was thinking when I said what I said. My, my, my reaction was mostly that we shouldn't be prejudging anything, in the sense that we will have to develop a, a, a remit for the new committee, but it wasn't necessarily that, that is just build us the cheapest new school at Dale Street you can find.
Right.
That, that, it should be a little broader than that, and we have to, I think the point I made, Leo was here that night as well, and I think the point I made from the school committee's perspective is they have to look at, sort of look at what the education plan was for this school that was not adopted, and sort of they have to prioritize. Like, what do they think is most important there? And what is their guidance going to be to say of, from their perspective, educationally, you know, what are, what are the most important aspects of that? And I think that's some discussions that they need to have in the, in the first instance as well. So, I'm just, and again, I'm not, I'm not...
I agree with you on it.
Disagreeing with you that we should do something, but I'm just not sure that moving immediately to substantive conclusions is the way to go. And again, I...
So, so, let me, let me go back. Pete, you were talking about, I'm not sure what a public hearing, or what, what we would get out of it. But my purpose, my perception is that coming out of this past process, it was rough and tumble enough that one step in this whole process is going to be for us to do things, ideally sooner rather than later, that give the town across the board a chance to almost vent, but don't want to vent looking back to do Monday morning quarterbacking on who did what, basically saying what we want to do is get the town to be thinking ahead. We want to give the town confidence that we are not going to simply, you know, spin our wheels for six months, not really doing anything meaningful, and then we'll start to think about what it might be, and we'll have a, you know, a more concrete discussion a year from now when we've gone through one or two funding cycles. I'm very sensitive to, this rejection of this project has, could potentially really delay the, us building a new school, given that we're looking at doing it outside of the MSBA. We have certain flexibilities around how we do things. Part of the location issue you brought up, Pete, that had to do with the MSBA process that prescribed how we had to think about things and how we, how we had to re, go about making decisions. We actually don't have to do that now. We, we still have to come to good decisions, so we still have to figure out how you get a bunch of people together in the town and come to some form of a consensus. That's the piece for me, this, this committee, that, it's in my head, it's still brainstorming. I totally agree that the school committee needs to come back with what is it that the school wants to be, wants to have as the configuration and everything for, for the, for the entire school system. So, that's a prerequisite. But mostly, I'm looking at all of the different viewpoints, all the different reasons why people went one way or the other way. There's multiple dimensions to it. It doesn't just distill down to, you got this one thing wrong. It, it's all over the map. If it distills down to anything, it's a lot of people who said, we didn't listen enough to take in what they wanted and take that into account. I know for myself, I, I undervalued this, the intensity which, with which people who wanted a school at Dale Street just wanted the school, they just, it's, it's, they just wanted it there. Because what Dale Street School has meant to them in town and what it's been to the town for so long. I kind of just dismiss that as well. I know some people want that, but that's not the main thing. I think to bring the town back together at a time when we have five months, that we're not going to be building a school, putting a process in place that allows people to actually articulate at least an attempt at a synthesized view of what the town as a whole wants. It's not the, I think it's not the kind of vision you might be thinking of, Mike, where it's a vision for a design of a school. It's with all these different things that people care about, if we could form a committee of people that were perceived to be sufficiently open-minded, even though they're going to come from their own angles and what they, what they value, but they're open-minded enough to be willing, able to, able and willing to talk with one another for four or five months, to come up to, with a statement of what they think the school needs to be. So, it's, I wrestled between vision or concept, maybe it's concept, for what that would be, that could then get tested at the town meeting. This is not a prescription that you then do blueprints on. This is a, here's what we're, here's what we're trying to do, here's why we want to do it, here's how we think it might work, give us your reaction. And so, it's, I'm, I'm probably coming a little bit softer at the issue of vision than maybe you are.
Yeah. And again, I'm not rejecting anything you're saying.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from the school committee and...
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was, it would have been a little bit better for this conversation to take place after they'd already had a meeting, but...
So, so Gus, if your goal is, is to, of give the residents the feeling that there's been a process that they've been included in, that's fine. We can, we can certainly do things to include residents in, in process. We tried to do that the last time. We postponed after our vote, after our conclusions with the school building committee. We, the select board opted to take a couple of months to have further process. I don't, it didn't change any of the votes.
Because it didn't really change the process, but, yes.
It changed the process, not the outcome.
It didn't change the process. The, the issue of the process did not act, it changed the schedule.
Yes.
It did not, it didn't change the process enough, if you, if you want to put it that way.
Yeah, because, well, at that point, a lot of the decisions had already been made, certainly. So, I mean, I, I had made up my mind about where the school should be located based on the data that I was getting and the, and the meetings that I had gone to, and I thought I had enough information. I didn't, you know, I didn't need more process at that point. And, and as a result, there, there was a couple of month delay. As I say, it didn't change my decision, because I had already made that decision based on, on the factors that I thought were important. I, I guess...
Well, that process didn't work, so I'm looking for a new process.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we can get to a consensus, that's, that's a great result. I mean, years ago, I, I bumped into a guy at, I don't know if it was an MMA meeting or something, but he was, he, he wrote about how to get to consensus in big issues for places like towns. And, and I mean, you could, you could do that sort of thing, where you could try to get, coordinate through some sort of mediated process for the town. The other thing you could do is you can, I mean, we can figure out what the residents in town want by doing a market survey of about 400 people, I'm told.
And I'm saying, let the, let the residents in town figure it out. Let them tell us. Why, why do we want to take it all?
Yeah, well, that's part of the issue, that, that if, if you want the residents to make the decision, you have to, you have to give them all the data, all the information. And it's a lot of data, it's a lot of information. I mean, the, the school building committee went through huge mounds of, of information, money, data, and it was, it's a very complicated process. I mean, a lot of, I think, I think the residents tend to vote on, on very emotional issues more than the, the data-driven issues.
I disagree. I, I mean, if you look at the reasons, some are emotional, some are not economic.
Different reasons, right? So, it's, it's hard to, to generalize, and when you have a, a vote that is as close as this, it's over-determined. So, you could come up with 10 explanations that are all correct, and they're all wrong. So, I think...
Well, I mean, I, I just, you know, I have my own...
I'll say this, I mean, look, if there's something further that you have...
You've heard the thought, it was brainstorming.
I think we ought to hear from the school committee, and we can take this up again once we've gotten their position on it. All right? Great. All right. Next, we have a request, oh, sorry, I put my glasses on. We have a request to vote to approve an agreement for 40B technical assistance with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership.
This was the grant we applied for that we do with Mass Housing Partnership. This is a $5,000 grant to hire Paul Haverty to assist the ZBA.
I'll recuse myself from this.
Okay. Pete is recused. Gus, any questions to come? This is going to the Hinkley site.
Correct.
Yeah. This is strictly, I have no problem with the request, but again, another, just general information. We always bring someone in to help us with this, and I realize, I'm not sure, and it's a small amount of money, so it's, I'm not arguing with the, the grant. What do they do?
He writes the decision.
He, he assists the ZBA in writing the decision, but also guides them through sort of the mediation process with the applicant as they move forward.
So, and so, what was behind my question is, we've done so many of these projects. I was trying to say, every time we have a consultant help us do something, and I was actually thinking, you know, I don't actually, when we were first doing it, I kind of get, we'll navigate, I'll help you navigate the system or the process. Now, it seems like we've done it so many times, it's probably not that. I understand helping write the decision, because that's just pure helping to carry the water. That's, is that...
That's essentially what he's helping.
That's essentially, okay.
Yeah. And I would say that while they are experienced and having done several of them, no two are exactly the same, so...
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, I think it's generally technical assistance, as in like, how you apply the zoning bylaw to a particular sewer line.
Okay.
And the meets and the bounds, right, and the markets, it's a lot of that.
It's very difficult.
I mean, it does involve writing the decision, but it's also a...
He does, he is a lawyer, and he brings that to the table too, although he cannot advocate per se, but understanding the, the DHCD regs, which are about 50 or 60 pages, I think. It's just a lot there.
As, as a resident and not as a select board member, I would tell you that I attended the ZBA hearing on this, and he delivered a little talk about the process. He had a PowerPoint slideshow that he showed everybody, so that's another thing that he does, apparently.
Yeah, he has done a number of these for us.
Yes.
And we don't have to pay him.
No, Mass Housing Partnership pays the $5,000.
I knew that.
Yeah.
Even if we had paid it, for a small amount, I probably wouldn't have guessed it. All right.
Go for it.
Okay. I move that we approve an agreement for 40B technical assistance with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership for the Hinkley South Lip.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Two in favor, and Pete has abstained. All right. Board and committee appointments, first to appoint Gus Murby to the Community Choice Aggregation Committee. Gus, what, what do you have to say for yourself on this?
I've been to two of the meetings, Nick, and it's been a lot of fun. They're doing a lot of good stuff. We're, so, you know, as, as some groups go, there's more fun to be had with that group than some of the other ones that everyone has.
There may be spreadsheets involved, right?
There are spreadsheets, I'm sure there will be.
At some point.
You're the perfect guy, you're the perfect guy.
Yeah, right now, it's PowerPoints.
Let's get a motion right now.
I've already edited some of the, I have some edits through this stuff. Detail edits that they haven't seen yet.
Are they, does the, does the committee support this appointment, Nick? Excellent, all right. And a motion from the clerk to appoint one Gus Murby to the Community Choice Aggregation Committee.
I move that we appoint Selectman Murby to the Community Choice Aggregation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then, now we're going to appoint Assistant Town Administrator Nicholas Milano to the Community Choice Aggregation Committee. I think it's a non-voting member.
Ex officio, non-voting member.
Nick on the other end.
Yeah.
So, well, that occurred to me, actually, when I saw that Nick was going to be ex officio. It strikes me that the select board members should be ex officio as well.
Well, then we only have two...
Then you only have two members.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should have three voting members for that, so, rather than two.
You can make the argument that it would be better to have Nick voting than me.
Nope, sorry, you're already in. We're extracting Nick from this, so, so do we have a motion on Nick?
Do I get to vote on this one?
Yeah, you can vote on this one too.
I, I move that we appoint Assistant Town Administrator Nicholas Milano to the Community Choice Aggregation Committee as an ex officio member.
Second. All in favor?
Non-voting.
As a non-voting member.
Ex officio, that's not an ex officio.
Oh, ex officio, non-voting member.
Does not mean non-voting. Correct. Right. An ex officio member can in fact be a voting member.
Ex officio, non-voting member.
Non-voting member. You have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye, opposed? All right. Next, accept the resignation of David Stevenson from the Medfield Energy Committee.
I move that we accept the resignation of David Stevenson from the Medfield Energy Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. And finally, to appoint Joseph Hunt to the Board of Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Hunt met with us at our meeting on Thursday night. Seems like he'll be a great addition to the Board of Trustees.
I would comment that both, he seemed like he was qualified, and it was also nice to see a relatively recent, you know, new resident here in Medfield step forward so quickly, so.
All right.
I move that we appoint Joseph Hunt to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye, any opposed?
Is he on his term?
He's filling whatever the vacant, it's Brett Hayman's term.
Yeah, he's filling a vacant term, so, well...
To fill the term of Brett Hayman.
Let me do that again.
Yeah, yeah, fill the remaining term of Brett Hayman.
I move that we appoint Joseph Hunt to fill the remaining term of Brett, Brett Hayman at the, on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
All right. We have a request to vote to open the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
I move that we open the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Do you have a hesitation on that, Mr. Peterson?
No. I thought there was a comment coming.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. All right. Any opposed? I feel like it should be more dramatic than that.
No, I thought, I was expecting a little more.
Like, there should be like something that's really like big, a big parchment of some kind that's now open.
I was tempted to say, regardless of what particular day, morning or afternoon, the town meeting itself will be held.
No, it is going to be on May 2nd, 2022.
Yes. 7:00 PM, or 7:30 PM.
If you get me a sneer drum, I'll do a little bit of a...
Okay, we need a little something.
So saith the town administrator.
All right. And is the chief going to be here for this one or not?
She is not going to be here for this, so...
So, our next is a request to appoint Joshua Souza as a lateral transfer into the Medfield Police Department, as recommended by the police chief.
And he is transferring from the Plymouth Police Department.
Oh, okay.
Excellent. Anything else on?
No, the chief highly recommends his appointment.
And when will his start date be?
I believe he is starting at the end of December. It's in the, in the paperwork.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know, I just missed that.
Kind of as a patrolman?
I, we, I didn't, couldn't include the paperwork in your packet. It's in, for you to be signed, because there's personal police information.
What, what grade rank?
As a police officer.
Police officer, okay.
Do we have a motion?
Yep. I move that we appoint Joshua Souza as a lateral transfer into the Medfield Police Department, as recommended by Police Chief Garrett.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Opposed? No one. All right, next. Pete, you probably have to recuse yourself from this as well, right?
I should, probably, yeah.
All right.
Question about...
That is the most definitive statement we've gotten out of you in a long time, Mark.
The state has been focusing on nonprofits recently, so.
All right, well, I'm slightly down.
It's better than the state focusing on you, Pete. It's just, it's just a generic category, that's a good thing.
All right, so this is, I see Kathy is here. Hi Kathy, do you have a comment on this, or?
No, I'm just here for any questions that you might have.
Oh, okay. All right. So, this is a request to accept the grant and sign the grant award from the Medfield Foundation for the Medfield Outreach Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan, the MONASP.
And I would just note that, for the record, that the reason that I am recused from this is that I was part of the Medfield Foundation, Legacy Foundation Grant Awarding Committee.
And you were also a member of the Medfield Foundation Board, correct?
Correct.
Of longstanding service to the town and the foundation?
20 years, $3 million raised for the town.
Congratulations.
All volunteers.
You really better recuse yourself then, Pete. I'm just kidding. All right. But Mark is not. All right, any questions, Gus?
No, I'll ask the question, are we going to do the contract next?
Well, I think we'll just have one vote here.
Well, there's two things.
Vote to accept the grant and sign the grant award.
And there's the contract.
So, you want to do it separately?
Well, they're two different things. So, let me ask the question.
Yeah, let's just...
I just was curious why the grant was $12,000, the contract that's going to follow the grant is $13,500, and I assumed it came out of...
Right there. Yep. We have an answer for you.
That's a great question. So, at the time that I did the grant proposal, I didn't have the amount back yet, so I, I ballparked it, based on other towns' work and hiring of the same consultant for similar work, which was a couple of years ago, so obviously the price has gone up. So, I made a pitch, and I asked for one amount, and then got the actual proposal from the consultant, which revealed a higher cost, and can, can say with a deep gratitude that the Medfield Foundation actually increased the amount of award more than what I had asked for. So, they, I asked for 10, they gave 12, and now we're making up the difference for the other 1,500.
1,500.
Thank you.
From my gift account.
I thought I'd have time to review, but I walked in, and you guys were like, ready. So, we...
I'm sorry for going this fast.
Moving along. So, we will make up the other funds through our gift account.
Okay, okay. It's because I'm like, spreadsheets, and I do the maths. These numbers aren't too good. Okay.
And you are right, Gus, there are two. There, one is to accept the award, and then I, in a later email, sent over the contract from Ann Budner to, to sign.
It was in the package.
Yeah, I saw the contract, yeah.
So, I'll do the grant first.
Did you have questions on the contract other than the price tag?
No, no, it was just, that was the only question I had.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Grant first. I move that we accept the grant and sign the grant award from the Medfield Foundation for Medfield Outreach Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan in the amount of $12,000.
Aye, second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? One abstained.
And then you want the second one?
Well, I think, we just did, we just did both.
The second would be to, to sign the contract from Ann Budner.
Sign the contract.
And it's also confidentiality. It gives us proprietary rights over any information, so signing, she's signing confidentiality about any exclusive information.
Yeah, I did actually have a question on that one, if I, and the question that I had, this is probably for you, Mark, so, this is a contract written by Ann Budner. Ordinarily, when we do contracts, we do a town form contract. Does this matter?
We do have a typical town form contract with vendors.
Yep.
I've had some preliminary discussions on this, but I wasn't in the loop in terms of what the details are, so I really don't know.
Mark, do you want to see a copy, or do you want to look at it?
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we, you voted to sign it, to accept the grant award, sign it, and then we can sign the actual contract on the 21st.
Okay.
Want to do that? And then Mark can review the, the contract.
Because the contract is actually, the contract is not on the agenda.
No, I, I, I thought the contract was part of the grant award. I didn't realize there were two separate things, so that's my apologies.
So, what we should do is treat this as a proposal, and for the scope of work and prices, we normally do and attach it to our form contract.
That's fine.
We can put it on the agenda for the 21st.
Do you want me to appear again on the agenda?
Kathy, the reason I asked the question, because it's a relatively straightforward contract, but there's terms in the town contract around indemnification, and you're not an employee, and termination, and all that stuff, that don't, aren't going to mean anything in this case, I'm sure.
Okay.
But just from a legal standpoint, when I saw a one-page contract, it's like, yeah, that's different, so.
Sure, I'll indicate that to her, and let her, let her know that there'll just be a week's delay, and that'll move along. Okay, thank you very much.
And that doesn't affect your timeline, right? You're not getting started until...
No, we're doing pre-planning work currently, but our actual, you know, we knew we had to wait to have it officially approved before we started.
Should handle this.
We'll put you on the...
This was an administrative vote. That's off.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Next, vote to accept the report from the Board of Selectmen Name Change Committee. Motion?
In light of the fact that the town historian has said that we should move on from our historic name, and that the longest-serving chair or selectwoman in town thought that the select board was the correct answer, I move that we approve or accept the recommendation of the Medfield Board of Selectmen Name Change Committee, as, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, vote to approve a contract with E.L. Harvey for Single Stream Recycling.
Same as last year.
It's exactly the same as last year.
There was nothing to pack in on, all right.
No, there was a, there was an update from Bo, just letting us know that the price had not changed from last year.
I give you the...
It was, did, was that, is this simply an exercise of an option on our already existing contract? I was thinking that...
Basically.
Yeah, okay, okay. Uh, let's see. Ready?
Ah, yes.
I vote that we approve the contract with E.L. Harvey for Single Stream Recycling.
Second.
All in favor?
Ayes.
All right, and I think, Christine, you let us know, we're going to defer this...
I'm going to defer number 10. We had some information come up today that we want to spend a little more time investigating, so we'll put this on the agenda for the 21st.
Can somebody explain to me what this actually is?
Well, it's a subordination, non-disturbance, and a tournament.
That might be the information that came out today.
This is a, a technical field common document in real estate transactions, but it leads to be used in the context of multiple agreements we have for different parts of the property, which have been superseded by the fact that whoever the current successor is to whoever we started with in the first place has withdrawn a portion of the project. They're not going to do the canopy project, although we've already signed agreements that contemplated that. So, we want to make sure that all agreements are, are current before we sign off at the la, on the final piece here. The project's only going ahead with the canopies, with the solar panels on the roof of the Kingsbury. They've withdrawn about basically half the projects.
So, so, just to feed, if, where this is going to come up, so, just to put out what I can, because I spent a fair amount of time with this this afternoon, as the non-lawyer on the, on the board here, we have us as the lessor signing an agreement with the lessie, which appears to place obligations on us, the lessor, on the solar tenant, who I assumed was the subless, who was the sublease lessie to our lessie. So, it was like we're, we're, we're reaching a legal agreement with two people that has a new obligation between us and that other entity's sublease, and I was sitting there, how does that work? That you, it's like a, you know...
Well, we are...
See what I'm saying?
Basically, because we own the land.
But there's some parts of here that actually place obligations on us.
The ground tenant, which is the Adirondack Club, which is entering into this agreement with the solar outfit.
Yep.
So, this is, this is to deal with various scenarios going forward, and if there were a default, the principal one, if there's a default or something financially with the ground tenant, or something happens with that relationship, that, that we'll recognize certain consequences flow.
So, so, just to distill it all down to probably the most important issue, and again, I probably don't know what I'm talking about here, because it's legal stuff, but the biggest issue that concerned me was that, as I read this, it basically obligates the town to allow the ground tenant to continue to use the property, and I'm saying, in the event of a, in the event of a default of the lessie. And I'm saying, but what if the default of the lessie leads the town to want to use the property for a different purpose or in a different way? This seems to almost lock us in to having need to allow this ground tenant force, to force us to maintain, you know, to keep the use of the property exactly where it is. That was the, that's the thing I'm reacting to.
Driver here is financing. That's what the financial institutions typically require from going forward in order to...
They don't, they don't want to be at risk to the Kingsbury Club and to the solar company.
At that part, I got...
And so, they're asking, they're asking us to basically say that, that, yes, we will make sure that, yes, we can replace the Kingsbury Club, but we have to let them stay.
Right.
So, and I will, I've got three lawyers around me, I'll accept, if you tell me when this actually comes up for a vote, don't worry about it, Gus, I'll accept that. The, the issue I had was if, not that this will happen, but if the lessie fails and defaults on the, on our lease, this thing appears to oblige us to allow the ground tenant to continue doing what the ground tenant's doing. If the ground tenant's doing that on the roof of a building, then our ability to use this land that is no longer leased because the, the lessie defaulted, it appears that our hands are tied with what we're going to do with that building, because we have indirectly picked up an obligation to the ground tenant, uh, to the solar tenant, to allow the solar tenant to continue on. Now, if it's a three-year lease, that's one thing. If it's a 20-year lease, that's another thing. So, and it's just, I'm reading it and going, it seems to me there's a legal obligation we're picking up here, and I want to be sure I understand it, that's all.
You go back, we've already, way back, consented to the, to the ground, to the Adirondack Club, okay?
Kingsbury.
Kingsbury Club, I'm sorry. We already consented to the Kingsbury Club getting into the solar arrangement with the third party anyway. This is just closing the loop. This isn't something to do. This is, this flows from our original consent to the Kingsbury Club that it was okay to bring in...
Right, but it is an added obligation that we're going to have an obligation to the solar company. Yeah, I, I think the risk is, I guess the risk is that the Kingsbury Club defaults, and then we want to less lease the property to someone who wants to tear the buildings down.
Right.
And so, I mean, I think, because realistically, I mean, again, I have to look back over this, I didn't read this to say that we would have to necessarily be a, a health club in there, but the, their panels and whatever they're sitting on would have to still be sitting on them. And I would, I would assume, my presumption would be that the property would be more valuable with the building built than with it out, just given how, as we saw in our earlier, our earlier hearing today, the challenge in getting commercial property, I would assume that the, that in the unlikely, and hopefully unlikely, and not, event of the Kingsbury Club defaulting and leaving, that a similar business would be the one that would go in there. I suppose the town could use it for its own purposes, but the, I, my take on the upshot of this is we have to leave the buildings there so they can have the solar panels on them.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's what I was picking up on, and I just need to hear assurance that there's, that's going to be okay.
That's the non-disturbance part.
The...
We're not going to disturb them.
The terms here, assuming that Kingsbury doesn't have some provision that they pay six months in advance, is that if that did happen, then the solar tenant would then just divert the lease, the, the payments that it owed to the Kingsbury would come to us. So, that, that led me to a secondary issue that said, so basically, if that happened, we will be subject to the terms that the Kingsbury Club worked out with a solar tenant. We'll inherit those terms, and that will be the only, you know, and I look at it and say, well, if the solar stuff is there for the Kingsbury's convenience, if we ever did have a default, as a town, we would be in a better spot. If there was no encumbrance of anything there that was a sublease, we'd be better off to do what we want.
No, forget, you've got the aggregate agreement as well, that you'll, the credit thing, where you've got a separate relationship with the solar company.
Well, that, that raised another question here, because there's one place here that says, well, this is an agreement that any, you know, only things that are signed here can change, you know, can change this agreement. I'm saying, but wait a minute, this agreement is coming out of another agreement that also has a clause...
That's a separate, that's totally separate, but it's there.
But, you see what I'm saying, is if this thing is affecting, it's just because of what I don't know.
Well, the upshot is that the...
No, I think, I think you, I think you have it correct.
No.
And the question for us, the, the business judgment, is are we comfortable accepting the risk that if, if Kingsbury defaults, we have no reason to think they are?
Yeah, right, yeah.
No issues whatsoever, nobody's... This is, this is a, this is a hypothetical, but in the event of a default, would we be comfortable being obligated to allow the solar panels to stay there? I would assume, and I don't remember from the lease, I would assume we would inherit the lease from the Kingsbury. If they defaulted, and we repossessed the property, we'd inherit, we'd, we'd claim, we'd be the...
Part of that.
Yeah, we'd be the, the, at least until, and then we'd be able to assign that to somebody else, right? And so...
So, if either of you would like this when it comes up for a vote, I, I won't make any of this argument again.
Well, in the meantime, we want to get back to basics, which was the agreement we signed with the solar company in the first place about the solar grid and all, which contemplated the, the full site being developed with the parking canopies, and, and everything was based upon that, and now that's not how this project is going forward, yet those agreements are out there worded that way, so they need to be updated, as, as I said.
I haven't even thought about that.
Nick, really, grew a dog this today.
And the, I think the solar company has already sold, the original developer has already sold it to somebody else.
So...
Although it hasn't been constructed, so who knows what it's going?
Yeah. But I, I think we knew that was going to come anyway, because the, the business model of the original developer was just to do the site location and permitting and all the other kind of stuff, and then, you know...
So, the bottom line for me, as I read this, and I said, wait a minute, there's an obligation that's coming onto the town, and I spent a fair amount of time this afternoon trying to play out the scenarios. What if this happened? What if that happened? This thing says this, this is, this is the controlling document, but we have these other agreements that also probably have the same clause. This is, you can't change those agreements without changing them there.
If it makes you feel any better, we signed a whole bunch of stuff with lenders for the Kingsbury Club over the years that, that are markedly similar to this, but the consequences are much larger, so.
I'm not sure that made you feel that...
That was pre-2018, pre-2018, just saying.
So, in other words, if this is another shovel of dirt being put into the hole, it's a little trouble. Okay. Well, if, either, I won't do this again, next time it comes up, I'll just say, what do you guys think, and we'll, I'll go with... And we'll, I'll go with
Now you know why we have a pause in this because we have some concerns as well.
Yeah.
If anybody wants my notes.
I mean, I will, I will just say from my perspective, from a business standpoint, I think that's an acceptable risk for the town to take.
That's, that's what I want to hear.
And just because, and this is more revenue, will be more revenue for the Kingsbury Club, which would make the likelihood of default less, it seems to be doing very well overall. Probably better than it has been, you know, the whole time it's been around. And so, and obviously, it's a good thing to have more solar.
This is like the indemnification clause for the rail trail for 99 years. We got that one fixed, so, or at least I think we got that one fixed. So it's another one of these where you don't know how the worm turns and twists on some of these sometimes.
I just got a request from Fred Davis. Fred, do you want to be promoted or is your comment in the Q and A sufficient? Because Fred's comment is while we're on the topic, I want to mention that the change in scope will eventually be seen as a significant energy slash climate difference.
I would just, to translate, that would be, we're talking about a reduction of about 800 kilowatt hours a year, less than clean solar energy being produced because they're not moving forward with the canopy project.
Right. So I'm not seeing further comment from Fred.
Between Fred's comment and Mark's comment, I'm just like getting overjoyed here.
Overjoyed at what?
At all the good news, all the things that are supposed to make it better.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay.
And, and to continue my, my pattern of not taking part in the meeting, I am going to be recused from anything related to the Kingsbury Club because of professional relationship and adjoining
I think we got three lawyers surrounding you.
Right, but the good news is Pete, we're not going to discuss that tonight, so.
We're not talking about it.
Just so you know, just so you know why I'm not chiming in.
That was just us not talking about this item, so.
You've not talked about it for a long time.
We did, we did, we did defer that till the 21st for some time. That's okay, right? I mean, that's okay. It's a good catch, Gus, I mean, it's a good, it is something we ought to do knowingly that we're taking on this risk, and that's an additional risk. All right, next, no citizen comments for the, pretty much every time since we've adopted that citizen comment policy, we have no citizen comment. Consent agenda, the council on aging requests a one day beer and wine permit for Tuesday, December 7th, from 3:30 to 5:30 PM for the first ugly sweater holiday social with a performance by the singing trooper Dan Clark. And Sunday, December 12th, from 12 noon to 3 PM for the Tri-Club Annual Senior Citizens Christmas Party. Does anyone know what the three clubs are?
I do not.
I don't think I've ever heard that.
Never heard it before.
Pete, have you ever heard that, the tri-club?
Nope, no idea what clubs.
Which three clubs those could be, fascinating. All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the item on the consent agenda submitted by the COA for beer and wine permit.
Excuse me.
There's two separate ones there.
That's why I said, that's why I just referred to it as the item submitted by the COA. But if you want, I'll do it all. I move that we approve the COA's request for a one day beer and wine permit for Tuesday, December 7th, from eight, from 3:30 to 5:30 PM for the first ugly sweater holiday social with a performance by the singing trooper Dan Clark. And Sunday, December 12th, from 12 noon to 3 PM for the Tri-Club Annual Senior Citizens Christmas Party.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, meeting minutes. Christine, where are we on?
You were going to get back to me with some comments about the drafts I had sent from our new recording clerk.
Well, it's back in your Was I really?
You were.
Ah, okay, well, I apologize then. Apparently, I was going to get back to you about that. What about, oh, is this a formatting issue?
There was whether or not
I thought, I thought I had sent you an email on that.
I don't think so, I'll look.
Hmm, hmm, I don't know. I might have sent you an email on that. My recollection was that one of them was, was a little on the detailed side.
I heard 18 pages.
So we had the original
I'm afraid that our clerk might
Down.
We might get Carpal-Tunnel syndrome with those kind of minutes. That was my own comment, there was, I think there was one of them as well. It had the proviso for the remote meeting, but it was not a remote meeting, which I thought was unnecessary. But otherwise, if you're looking for more detailed comments than that, I can give them to you, but I apologize. I thought I had discharged my duty on that front, I apologize for not doing it. But I'll get that back to you before the 21st, maybe we can do a bunch of minutes on the 21st. All right, town administrative updates, and they have a few in here.
That's more informational. I just have, just wanted to draw attention, the Medfield Housing Authority RFP was in your informational packet. If you want to take a look at that. And then it was just really nice to see everybody out this weekend at the holiday stroll and the parade, so. And I have great pictures of both of you walking in the parade, so I will send them along to you.
I'm sorry.
Together or separately?
You were separated in the parade.
I, I do, I'm sorry I could not make the parade. I did have a first, though, in my parenting career in that I was simultaneously operating the scoreboard at a basketball game and attending to a bloody nose at the same time. So I had one hand going here and the other hand going here on the scoreboard. It was pretty, it was pretty impressive if you saw it. And I want to compliment Medfield Basketball that blood washes out of a penny exceptionally well. And so he was back for the second half. But I do want to note that no foul was called in the play for that. But I'm sorry I missed that. I'm sorry I missed
Natural protest.
Well, we, we won, so we'll let it go. I did want to ask Christine about the architectural, the handicap space violation that was informational.
Yeah, so we've had several of them recently. We had one at the Council on Aging that we've addressed, and then we had the one at the Town Hall. We've been working with Gary Pelletier and Amy Collarin to address that. And what is most likely going to happen is we're going to have to relocate those spaces within the back parking lot at the Town Hall. In order to put the proper signage in, the spaces won't then be long enough. So we're going to have to do a little moving around, which will actually time up well because Mo and I have been working on some changes to how we're going to lay out that parking lot. So we'll do that as well.
Okay.
We will, we will respond to the letter and let them know, we will address it.
Is it just the parking lot right behind the townhouse, or is it the one behind the
It's both.
Avenue as well?
Both of them. Neither have the, when we repaved the parking lot last time, the signs didn't go up. They're, the color is stamped onto the, onto the pavement, but the signs themselves are actually up.
Yeah, it sounds like they want signs on poles.
Signs on poles, yeah. So we'll take care of that.
All right. And is, do we have issues in other buildings as well, or is this it?
We have some that were identified in our study, so we're addressing those. But these were complaints that were filed by a resident.
Okay, so that's one of those topics that we really should address at some point because there were a lot of violations of the architect or the ADA in some of the new buildings that we've built. So we should figure out why that's happening.
Okay, let's do that. Anything else, Christine? Oh, and then I did have a question about the D-CAM RFP. Is this genuinely informational, or do you think we have some basis to respond to the RFP?
I don't think we have any basis to respond. They're fully aware of the space we have at the state hospital if they would be interested in that, so this is
Do you want to be personal?
Yeah. You pee me in my joke.
Is there truly no place we have that we can respond with? Or there's somebody in town, I mean, including private property?
There may be private property who's, who's interested. That's why I put it on the agenda in case anybody's interested and did not see that.
That caught my attention because the, the tenant, it's good that Kathy's here too, maybe. The tenant was the development, State Development Office.
Yeah, Department of Developmental Services, I believe.
And so I was wondering, so Department of Developmental Services, I wondered whether there was any synergy between Medfield Outreach and the, and the tenant that would come in there that would be beneficial, that's all.
Can you take a look? And just one more update for you, excuse me. The three clubs are the Lions Club, the Sportsman's Club, and the American Legion.
Oh. Oh, wow, all right.
And then FOSI, the COA, the Legion Auxiliary, and a few others have contributed to the holiday party as well.
Oh, well, that's great.
That's probably going to be kind of a wild party if this
Don't want you to rethink your permit there.
Whoa, okay.
That's all I have for this evening.
All right. Next meeting date, it's December 21st, January 4th, January 18th. In looking at the calendar, it occurred to me that, two things occurred to me. One is we, we may need a third meeting in January
Agreed.
as we get to the budget, as we get into the budget, because everything was, was kind of pushed back from a timing standpoint. And so I wanted to raise with you all, let me just grab my calendar here. First thing is whether are we really going to be in a position to be really productive on the 4th? I don't know what everyone's vacation schedule is going to be and whether there'll be any accumulation of activity between the 21st and the 4th for us to deal with on the 4th. And then if, if not, whether we'd be better off pushing it back and, and, you know, probably scheduling meetings, you know, on the 11th and the 18th, and then potentially if we'd have to on the 25th. Depending on the, all the stuff that comes up and, you know, how late we want those meetings to go. So I don't know, Pete and Gus, what does your, what do your schedules look like? If we, I mean, I'm happy to keep it as it is, I just, my recollection is that sometimes that first Tuesday meeting in January isn't, there isn't much to do.
No, well, especially when you're meeting on the 21st.
Right.
We don't get a lot of requests for things. Most people are off that week, so we don't
My original suggestion was going to be to defer the meeting on the 21st, but we'll have stuff to do at that one, that one. So, which is fine. And, and, but then we might want to push the 4th back. And at least tentatively, I think we might have to meet three times in January.
If you want to change those dates, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Does that work? Okay, we'll go with the 11th, 18th, and the 25th.
Yeah, and if, if it turns out we don't need the 25th, we can always, Bill, is that going to work for you?
So far.
All right, yeah.
I'll let you know.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right.
One other point about that, just, Nick, Nick and I were on the CCA meeting today. And in the discussions, one of the things that the committee wanted to do is to take the draft plan that they have and present it to the selectmen, but ideally, they were going to, you know, present it and then give you and Pete a chance to take a look at it. For what it's worth, I think that the draft is, I don't think you're going to find a whole lot controversial in the draft, but nonetheless, they wanted to have the opportunity to present it.
Yeah.
They're, ideally, what they're trying to do is to get, get the approval of the BOS so that they then can open, there's, there's sort of like a public comment period. And at the end of it, the BOS will have to have a public hearing to kind of finalize that. So I think the idea was to try to get that public comment period opened up in January so that the committee could move ahead.
And does that go to town meeting or no?
Uh, that shouldn't have to go to town meeting.
At this point, it's all border slack.
Okay, that's right, okay. All right.
And at this, and this is the approval of the plan that ultimately goes to the DPU. Once the DPU approves it, then there's the RFP, and I think that also right, approval of this law, and before a contract gets awarded.
Gotcha, okay.
So I see that I am supposed to be at a meeting on the 11th at 7 o'clock, but that's the Town Climate Action Plan Community Forum. And I'm not the, I'm not really the expert on that, so they won't miss me.
Well, I think they may miss you, Pete, but I think you're suggesting that they might be able to carry on without you.
It might be one of those things where they would appreciate having select board members attend, clearly, probably.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to keep it on the 4th, I'm just, we could do the 4th, the 18th, and the 25th. And then if you want to, yeah, I don't, I don't want to miss that, Pete, so.
Okay.
Let's keep it on, let's keep the 4th, the 18th, and the 25th. And if something came up, and I can't imagine what would be coming up with the, an emergent nature between the 4th and the 18th. Famous last words, but, all right. All right, that's it. All right, selectmen report, Pete.
So the holiday weekend started off with selectmen office hours, then went to the holiday stroll that same night. The next day was the parade, and then on Sunday was the Angel Run. And I think Angel Run actually had more runners this year than, than ever before. So it looked like everybody was having as much fun as, as usual back before COVID, so that was good. Energy Committee met. The Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund held both a, the pitchet that Kathy McDonald referred to, where people were pitching their projects to get the grant money. There were about 68,000 or something of, of money that was pitched for. And there was about 28,000, I think it was, that was awarded in grants, 28,200, I think it was the figure actually, for people. In addition to Medfield Outreach, Sustainable Medfield got money to do their, their informing of the, of the town about what they're doing and to try to get people to sign up for things that will save energy. Peak House Historical Group is looking to put a cement floor in the Peak House to solve some water leakage problems, and, and they wanted to do a, a dig to preserve the artifacts that would be, where the floor is going to get poured. So that is sort of a last chance to find some artifacts. And they'll use those artifacts in their, in their exhibits. They're going to have rotating exhibits in the Peak House in the future. And then the Friends of the Medfield High School Theater Society wanted money for a cyclorama, which I learned is the curtain that goes across the back of the stage. And, and they got their money for the cyclorama. I just knew the building in Boston that was circular, and I always thought it was called the cyclorama because it was round. The other wonderful news from the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund is that there has been the announcement of a anonymous donor who has proposed a $100,000 match for any donations between the now and the end of the year. So if you make a donation to the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund by the end of the year, your money will get doubled. And then Gus and I went to the Boy Scout Eagle Scout Ceremony for Yanni Passas, Keith Erickson, and Tito King. And then the last thing is I'm meeting with Jessica Riley, Chair of the School Board, tomorrow morning to talk about the school issues.
That is a fulsome report, Pete, thank you.
Did I tell you about Jake Auchencloss, the congressman? I don't think I told you about him.
No.
So
Yes, we have, we have plenty of time, it's 8:25, this is usually like
How much time do I, I need to
This is usually like halftime here, so you feel free. All right. It would be a new record if we spent most of our time on an agenda item that was deferred in selectmen report, so let's go for it. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
So the other thing that I did, which was very interesting actually, was the Congressman Jake Auchencloss asked me to, reached out to me and asked me to hold a community forum so that he could inform the town of Medfield about what he's been doing. And, and, and so that we did that, and we actually had about triple the number of people, they said, that usually attend these forums that he's been holding in other towns. And so that we got a good showing, we got a huge number of kids from Travis Tolliver class at the Medfield High, oh, Middle School, eighth graders. But it went for an hour, Jake was down in DC in front of a green screen. He looked, nice looking green screen, it looked like a brick wall, until he touched it, and then it vibrated. But, and so we got caught up on, on, on what he's been doing, and the kids asked him a bunch of questions, so that's it. Do you want to hear a couple of jokes?
Whatever you got, Pete.
So, so the, the attorney had a plumbing problem. And at the end of the, at the end of the job, the plumber handed him a bill, and the attorney said, "Oh, my God, I don't even charge this much." And the plumber looked at him and said, "Yeah, I didn't either when I was an attorney."
All right.
It sounded like a move that we make it public that we either will have citizens come to comment, or we're going to have joke time.
We have joke time.
Choice is yours.
We're going to have joke time. All right, thank you, Pete.
I, I have some items.
Oh, go right ahead, go right ahead.
I mean, it's only 8:25, as you pointed out, there you go. Um, the holiday stroll was, was good. It was a nice time. Every store we went into had a big smile on their face and seemed to indicate that it was, you know, it was a good night. I was surprised, Park Street Books, when I was in there, Jim was saying that there actually are people from out of town that come to our holiday stroll, which sort of, you know, I just didn't figure that would happen, but that did. I also learned that probably one of the, you know, indicators you can find around how successful a gathering is is how badly the overflowing barrels were. We got to Baxter Park after the ceremony, and the very first barrel, there was like surrounded by cups and plates, just totally overflowing, so it was obviously good even before we got there. And Kathy, we're just like a couple of times a week, so we, we ended up at Nosh and Grog at the end. And there, sitting right next to us was Kathy and a bunch of friends of hers. They checked out, we checked out a little bit later, commented, because usually Nosh and Grog's pretty quiet from about 9 o'clock on, and this place was packed. And we commented, it seemed like it was a good night. Judging by the, the size of the smile on the, the white person that we were talking to, it was a really good night for, I think, everybody there. I would also like to acknowledge the superior experience of our most senior selectman. At the holiday parade, as we were leaving the Blake driveway, the fire engine seemed to set a pace that was faster than any pace I've ever seen. And I assumed the idea was it was a quick pull out to the street, and then we would slow down. So I just jogged on out, and then the fire engine didn't stop, so I was jogging even more. And as I looked back, because Pete's the runner, I was expecting to see him pass me, but he basically just maintained this pace and disappeared for a while. And I, I kept up with the, the fire engine, but this gap formed. And my first thought was that Pete was going out to Pleasant Street there and was just going to cut across one of the side streets over to park and pick us up on the way back into the high school. But no, I realized that the wisdom of, of an experienced selectman is really noteworthy because Pete realized, well, if we had just run like that, it was the, it was those dinosaur kids and the, and the brownies and all these little kids that were getting left in the dust. So I tip my hat to you because you're the one who stood up for the, the smallest legs in that parade. It didn't make them feel bad because of this cavernous gap between, where I was sitting there behind one float, making sure that the lions
Yeah, I worked, I worked with the, the little Girl Scouts, I did.
Yep, it's, I, I learned a lesson as, you know, your experience.
What was your parade time, though, at the end? How fast did you finish it?
It was pretty good. I haven't run that far.
Or did you end up on a call, like after you had to go home and hose by the end?
Kept going, kept going, kept going. So that was one. I attended the Townwide Master Planning Meeting last night. Thought the meeting went well, there were about almost 30 people there. It, it looked at certain of the recommendations that have come through the Townwide Master Plan and the Long Range Resilience Plan. I thought the actions that people picked out were, were good. They, you know, they're, they're not controversial. They, they didn't appear to be controversial. The one that surprised me a little bit, and I, I felt good about it because I agreed, is you could also vote against an action if you didn't like it. And the one action that got shot down by a good number of people was finding more land to build more parking lots here downtown. So although there's a parking issue here downtown, nobody was advocating to, I don't know, build, knock a building down or something to get more space, so.
Well, as, as we know, though, Gus, there, there's not really a parking issue.
Well, I know, that's why I was against it, but I was, apparently, a lot of people have figured that out. Because even though there's a parking issue, it's not a volume, it's not a space.
Not a lack of spaces.
Yeah, so that was good. We had the, I've already kind of covered the Community Choice Aggregation Meeting today. So the plan is to come in with a plan, the draft plan for you all to review in, in January. The hope is to be able to get that cycled through relatively quickly to get it out to the public. And then I had one other question on the, on the informational stuff, the Comcast rate change. How many, do we know how many Comcast customers we actually have here in town?
We can find
Yeah, we can, I think they sent that to us in June. Let me find that for you.
I'd just be curious, and the reason I'm curious is, you know, I read the letter, and we get these things, it's a rate, you're Comcast? Well, you're going to, you're not going to like what I got to talk, you saw it, okay? I went through, so I read the letter and usually just read the letter and go, okay, yeah, they're doing what they're doing. I don't think much about it. But this time, I did take a look at their rates. And it's like, there's only a couple that aren't going up double digits. And, and, you know, the, the last thing in the letter here is, we know you may have questions about these changes. And, well, now that I know it's Bill, I guess we might make a big deal about it anyway. But I was thinking if there were a lot of people that were Comcast customers, it's like, the, the internet stuff is fine. It's 3% and 4% increases, but the TV stuff, 13%, 14% increases now. Maybe they haven't done any increases in a couple of years, but I thought those were some pretty excessive increases on the, at least the TV service side, so. I don't normally think of us as going over, out on a limb around consumer advocacy, but this one just rubbed me the wrong way when I looked at it. You can see the
No, I, I saw it.
I did the math.
Wow, nice.
There was one thing that went down, that was the
Are you suggesting we do something about it, or?
I'd like to know how many customers, I mean, if.
We can get that for you.
That just seems like an awfully high increase, and if they send us a letter to let us know about it, if we sent a letter back that said, "We think you're being a little excessive on your internet, on your TV services and management."
Well, I think they have to do this, right? I think they have to do this because they get their, I think we ultimately approve their.
Their contract.
Their contract and their franchise in town. I'm not sure that we have any recourse on the price, but.
Just because they have to tell us doesn't mean we, we don't have to not do anything about it.
Was it the cable component that's going up?
It's the, it's the TV, yeah, yeah.
Cable?
Yes.
So, that's actually, we, we get a percentage of their revenues.
Mm-hmm.
Close to 5% of their revenue, so we actually benefit the town ironically by the fact that they are increasing that.
Well, then we can.
The non-cable revenues, we don't get any.
We could call them and say, "We think they've been modest in their increases." Bill's not listening. All right, that's all I had.
We were discussing how everything is going up and the alternative.
Yeah, I mean, they should really probably be more like 20% increases than 14, that's what we were saying while you were having that conversation.
Is this going to affect any of your favorite channels, Bill?
Just trying to fill the time.
We pushed it past 8:30.
I'm waiting for your joke.
Yeah. My, my acknowledgement of Pete's superior expertise as a parade marcher is close to, I'm going to come to a joke tonight.
Anything else?
Nope.
Oh, couple of items, all right. So, last, was it Wednesday? On last Wednesday, we had our first collective bargaining session with fire union, and we have scheduled our next, our first collective bargaining session with the police union on December 21st. And so, I think, Gus, that we on the Collective Bargaining Committee are aligned with your hope, and Pete as well, that we'd like to get this done, kind of in right, in regular order, before the expiration of the next contract. And so, we'll see what happens there, but we started that process. The Affordable Housing Trust Board of Trustees met on, on Thursday night. Joe Hunt, who's now a member of the board, joined us for that. Most of our discussion was on the action plan for the next two years, or three years, I forget which period it covers, but it's kind of the implementing document for the Housing Production Plan, for what the trust is going to do. It doesn't have approval beyond the Affordable Housing Trust, but we're working on updating that particular, that particular document as well. I think the update we got from Sarah is that, the hope is that the revised Housing Production Plan can be presented to us and the planning board in January.
One question on that, this Housing Authority RFP, if that goes through, does that, that gives us the next year of safe harbor?
That gets us to 10%. Well, well, hold on, it depends on, the, the RFP is for a minimum of 35 units. To get to 10%, I believe the number is 44 or 45.
So, it would get us another year.
Under the new census. Well, no, no, yeah, if it, if it's 35 plus the six at Hinkley, it would get us close to the 10%, it would get us another year of safe harbor. And if it's more than, I mean, the last one was 60? So, the last one was 60, would have gotten us to 10%, so depending on where the number comes in, but they did not specify the number of units in the RFP, and so they, a minimum of 35. So, I think they would accept it. I read it as a minimum of 35, but I don't think they prescribed the number.
I was thinking that.
Yeah, I could have misread it, but I thought it was a minimum, not, not a maximum. So, if it's 35 plus the six, that would get us another year of safe harbor, it would get us within five, you know, we don't, we don't have the final, final census numbers, but our estimates so far have been pretty good, and so that would.
Was it at least 35?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, and then what I'm getting at is then by the time, if that gave us one more year of safe harbor, then by that time, we should know whether we have a development project up at the State Hospital, which would be as proposed right now, which is probably not a final form, 335 more, so we, we go, we do a tremendous overshoot.
Yeah, so, we'll see what happens with that. But yeah, that's where that will get us, I mean, I, who knows, I don't want to speculate on what it will be, but if it's, if it's with, combined with the six at Hinkley, if it's anything higher than 38, it will get us to the 10%. Most, most likely, depending on the final census, I would echo your comments about the stroll. I thought it was great, walked around with the kids. I thought, as usual, every year, there's sort of some sort of safety enhancement that makes it a little safer, I think, because there's so many kind of kids running around and all the rest of it, and, you know, I, you know, I'm sort of always on hyper father alert of people running around and moving and, you know, all of that, and with all the lights and the people and the, the police officers directing traffic, I thought it was, was really, really well done overall. I did manage to miss the actual tree lighting portion of it, because we were engaged in an activity on the other, other end of it, so I trust the trees were lit, they were, they literally came by. I already noted why I missed the parade on Saturday, and it was great to be in the Angel Run on Sunday. I did not finish that highly, but I, I believe I was the first selectman to finish. I think I held my spot in the selectmen, selectmen division for another year. And then my final note is just on a personal note, the town clerks have made nomination papers available for the next election for people who want to run, I'm not going to be one of them. I think when I, I don't want to put it this way, when, my, my wife and I agreed that I could run for a second term three years ago, it was kind of on the condition that that would be it. And I think if you had seen the scene at my house this evening when I was leaving, you would confirm, yeah, in the wisdom in that decision, but, yeah, so I just wanted to let you both know that. The one promise that I will make, well, a promise I will make to the two of you, is that, is to get those two collective bargaining agreements done before I finish in March, because I feel like I've been collectively bargaining for five years.
So, if you don't succeed.
Well, then it's your problem, Gus, but what I'm hoping is not to have to leave you with that to pick up on, because I know it's not everybody's favorite activity. And so, my goal will be to get two longest-term contracts done and negotiated and approved before I go, and so there'll be a clean slate to start. The other housekeeping thing is that someone will have to take my spot on the Affordable Housing Trust, because the bylaws require a selectman to take that spot. If one of you two wants to do it, I'm happy to let you do it as soon as you'd like, or